The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved, and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, good evening everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of November twenty-seventh. We'll call the meeting to order. First of all, under presentations this evening, we have none. Under adoption of the agenda, could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you, Councilor Vroba, seconded by Councilor Clark, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from GFL, cut report for October, could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you, Councilor Cernick, seconded by Councilor Ford, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from Heather Weber, Perkins Street sidewalk request, do we have a motion for that? Councilor Vroba, seconded by Thank you, Councilor Cernick. Okay, dear Honorable Mayor, City Council members, I'm writing you regarding Perkins Street from where the residential area starts between Second and Third Avenue, and the corner of Perkins and McDonald Road. Currently, there are no sidewalks for pedestrians on either side of the road for the majority of the distance. There are many families with children who live on this street, and I believe the south side of Perkins would be able to facilitate the space for a sidewalk, so that pedestrians are not walking on the busy street. Some families need to walk to bus stops with their children each morning during the school year, and most end up walking through people's yards on the south side of the road. There is one section of sidewalk on the north side of the road between First and Fourth Ave. It could be connected as well, and if continued west would connect the new paved walking path. I believe this would be a great addition to our sidewalks, especially now with the new walking path to connect to. Thank you for your time and consideration, Haley Weber. So what's a wish of council on this request? I know usually for something like this, it would be an eighty-twenty, although over the years, there's been, you know, the council of the day have helped out with improvements coming out of that utility fund. So what's the thoughts on council, go ahead, Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, worship, and I do know that like, yes, the eighty-twenty rule, but then there was talked also maybe fifty-fifty. But I've been thinking about the Perkins Street one, and this is a very busy street, and it's increased in busyness of truck traffic mainly because the city has decided that that should be a truck route. So, and I live on Jubilee Place, which is just off Fourth Avenue, so I see the amount of trucks that come down, and I also see these young kids trying to walk on the grassy areas, and then come winter, they're walking through snowbanks trying to get to the bus stop, or even just trying to get over to the Hillcrest School. So I do think it would be necessary to at least, at the minimum, put in a sidewalk in front of those houses that lead all the way to the back alley that was suggested by the city, and we have the pictures there. If we could find it in the budget to even just do those portions. And the other thing, though, I would like to see is that we talk with the homeowners and the condominium and the apartments to make sure that they're in favor of clearing those sidewalks, or at least willing to participate, and then see if that is suffice for now until the next year's budget with the new council, and see if there's room or a need for any more sidewalks, but at least getting the kids safely to the area of the Fourth Avenue where they could then walk in the back alley would be a little bit safer than what we're doing right now.
Yeah, it would be safer for sure, to get them to that back alley, which is
If we could at least refer this to budget, I'm not making the motion that we put it in, but I'm at least making the motion that
That we refer it to budget.
To budget right now.
For deliberation. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Vroba, second, or go ahead, Councilor Ford.
Thanks, worship, I do agree with Councilor Vroba that we defer this to budget, but I'd also like a little bit of community engagement on this, is it possible to work with our marketing group to maybe just create an online survey that we can put on our Facebook page for anybody in the community who uses that area, just to say, yes, I would be in favor of this, or no, just, just to kind of get a little bit more pulse of the area, because I don't go by that way very often, so I'm not sure, but it would be nice to know what other people think.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford, I'm sure Jaclyn could set that up for us. Okay, any other questions, comments? Saying none, everybody's happy with that, okay, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under written reports of committees, we have the Creighton Lodge minutes of September twenty-first. Do we have a motion for that? Okay. Thank you, Councilor Wolaser, seconded by Councilor Cernick. Ready for the question, all in favor? Any comments or anything to add to that report?
Thanks, worship, I'm on the committee, and pretty much everything is always wonderful at Creighton Lodge, but we are working on our fundraiser for the upcoming year, so tickets will be available pretty soon here, I think we're starting December first, so later this week, so tickets will be on sale, so definitely something to watch out for, it's gonna be comedy day, and it's gonna be really great, so.
Okay. Thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee minutes of October twenty-fourth. Do we have a motion for these? Thank you, Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Ford, ready for the question, all in favor? Thank you. Councilor Clark, any comments?
Thanks, worship, we did have a the meeting that we talked about the Roche Percy Road, and we were sending our our thank yous to the MLA who supported that. Also, because I said it was never going to get done, I'm now being asked to make that speech about Highway forty-seven North, because I think if I say it won't get fixed, it will, so they're using me in a, in a bad way.
Good thing you have broad shoulders.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, and yes, we would like to collectively thank Minister Carr for her efforts on helping that roadway get done. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have the Economic Development TSS Funding Resolution. So Targeted Sector Support Grant Funding. Estevan is in the process of economic diversification and building a strong, vibrant community while the landscape around oil and gas remains challenging. During this process, Estevan is seeking solutions to increase the city's opportunity and capacity to enhance sustainability over time. As such, to address this, there is a need to explore different applicable grant funding initiatives designed to improve municipal capacity, fostering partnerships with collaborating municipalities, and enhancing the well-being of Estevan. To address the need for economic growth and diversification in Estevan while opening new avenues for grant funding, the Targeted Sector Support TSS Program is proposed, providing Estevan with an opportunity for grant funding that enhances our city's capacity. The TSS Program provides municipalities with a seventy-five percent grant funding on eligible costs up to a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars of funding. Through program delivery by Southeast College, there would be roundtables with councils, leaders, industry experts to determine the energy knowledge gaps. Additionally, there would be workshops and overall energy transition in Southeast Saskatchewan, carbon capture and storage, as well as geothermal and other energy applications. The return on investment for Estevan would be the delivery of forty-five seats of full-day training for municipal staff, council, community stakeholders, consultation with neighboring communities to enhance networking and collaborative opportunities, energy knowledge gaps and community synergies, and an increase in capacity for the participating communities through engagement and education. So the city has been endeavoring to capitalize on strategic grants that promote economic diversification and progression in Estevan. The proposed, the proposed grant would facilitate positive progress toward increasing Estevan's capacity, sharing and learning best practices with energy transition, and improving collaboration for future energy-related projects. The recommendation would be to pursue the grant funding with TSS, and that Estevan will be the applying municipality. A separate agreement can be drafted between Estevan and the collaborating municipality as required for TSS and appropriate reconciliation of funds. Securing grant funding through TSS represents forward progress with energy transition, potential future, future projects, and proactively building relationships with local communities eager to thrive and better diversify their communities. So what's the wish of council on this request? Councilor Cernick?
Just wondering, question, is there any way to like to get this under, we already have so many, we have an active board, we have an MC, I don't know if creating another board is probably the, is there any way for this to fall under Economic Development that we have currently?
I think it could.
Thank you, Councilor Cernick, once it is proposed, I believe partnerships with the college right now, if we were awarded the funding, we could probably link it in what we're doing with the Innovation Council, the Tech Hub, and Economic Development. I know we just need the resolution to put in the grant to see if we get the funding. I can definitely look into what that looks like for consolidating it with some of our groups if we get it.
Now, that's a good point, Councilor Cernick, we want to keep focus on the economic development side, not have it scattered in too many committees, that's true. Councilor Clark?
Thanks, worship, do we know the other communities, Waverne and Cornack, have it, are they kind of on side with this, or do we put our name in and then go to them after?
Thank you, Councilor Clark, from my understanding, the college is working with all the local municipalities to really spearhead that discussion of Center of Energy Excellence for Estevan. So we have carbon capture, we're looking at geothermal, some of those things. I think this funding, it comes out of municipal revenue sharing, and that would work for the surrounding municipalities, so I could talk to the college and make sure that they have touched base with all the surrounding municipalities, from my understanding right now is they have, because this TSS sport is only for partnerships, and that we would need to be a partnership with the rest of them. As far as Cornack goes, I believe they were reached out to, I can confirm that. But other than that, I'm not sure if Waverne's been identified as being part of that energy transition area, so I can clarify that with the college.
Yeah, usually, Councilor Clark, it would consist of us, RM Estevan, RM of Coalfields, and the town of Beefeath. Is the immediate area that they're probably looking at. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, worship, I'll make the motion to apply for this grant and see what happens when forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Seconded by Councilor Frank, any further questions or comments? Saying none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, from the city clerk, Municipal Revenue Sharing Grants. Okay. So Declaration of Eligibility, Ministry of Government Relations has annual requirements to be eligible for the Municipal Revenue Sharing Grant Program. Municipal Revenue Sharing Grants can be used to encourage effective local governance. To support this objective, Government Relations is implementing annual eligibility requirements for all municipalities to receive their unconditional municipal revenue sharing grants. It is recommended that we pass the attached resolution, so there is no disruption in the twenty-four municipal revenue sharing grants. For continued grant funding, allow the city manager, city treasurer, and city clerk to execute the required reporting annually. The Council of the City of Estevan confirms that the City of Estevan meets the following eligibility requirements to receive the municipal Revenue Sharing Grant as they have met the following requirements. Submission of the twenty-three audited financial statement to the Ministry of Government Relations. Submission of the twenty-three public reporting on municipal waterworks of the Ministry of Government Relations. In good standing with respect to the reporting and remittance of education property tax, adoption of a council procedure bylaw, adoption of an employee code of conduct, and all members of council have filed and annually updated their public disclosure statements as required, and Estevan City Council authorized the city clerk to sign the Declaration of Eligibility and submit it to the Ministry of Government Relations, so if we could have that resolution passed, so city clerk can move forward, that would be great. Councilor Wolaser, you'll make that motion, okay, thank you, seconded by Councilor Clark. Any further comments, discussion, saying none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have land development subdivision application zero-four SUB two-zero-two-three thirteen-thirty-eight, or thirteen-thirty-three Eighth Street. We have our land development man with us this evening, Richard, thank you for coming. City of Estevan's processing a subdivision proposal for a five-hundred-and-fifty-seven-square-meter residential lot located at thirteen-thirty-three Eighth Street. The proposal is to divide the property in half, and then add each half onto the adjoining developed property. The city entered into an agreement with the adjoining landowners for purchase of property subject to approval and registration of the subdivision. As each adjoining property is already developed, there is no requirement for further development as part of the land sale other that each landowner needs to construct a fence or building to fill the property, so the neighborhood maintains its aesthetic appearance. It is recommended that council consider approval of the proposed subdivision subject to payments of a certificate of approval fee of a hundred and fifty dollars and preparation of a plan of survey. Richard, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, not. Not at this time, your worship, if there's any questions, so I'm available.
Okay, thank you, the recommendation is consideration be given to approval of this subdivision application subject to the following conditions. Number one, subdivision to be registered in accordance with a plan of survey to be prepared by Saskatchewan Land Surveyor. Number two, approval is subject to a certificate of approval fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, we'll open it up to council if you have any questions of Richard, if not, if you don't mind moving forward to the motion. Councilor Frank?
Um, no questions, myself, worship, I would make the motion for this, and just think it's a great opportunity for these homeowners, and anybody else in the city is living in areas where there is infill properties, this is a great time to seize on those and make yards bigger, find partnerships like that, or develop, encourage that, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Have we got a second, Councilor Vroba? Any further discussion, debate? Saying none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty-two-three dash twenty-seventy-seven, Fees for Service Bylaw. This evening, we will give first reading, and we have updated, the city clerk passed these around for the updated numbers. These are the numbers that we will be going by, thank you, city clerk, did you have anything else to add?
Your worship, just that these updated numbers are just part of the leisure services portion. All the rest of the ones that are updated in the bylaw are corrected with the red marks.
Okay, thank you for that. So, bylaw twenty-two-three, again, this will be for first reading, then we'll advertise for a couple weeks, so our citizens have the opportunity to see what they think of it, and then have the opportunity to get back to us if they had any questions, comments, issues, or whatever that may be. So, a bylaw, bylaw twenty-two-three dash twenty-seventy-seven, a bylaw to provide for the charging of fee for services provided by the city of Estevan. Could we have a motion, please, for first reading this evening, Councilor Clark, thank you. Seconded by Councilor Cernick, thank you, Councilor Cernick. Ready for the question, any comments, anything else? Saying none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty-two-three dash twenty-seventy-eight, Amending Zoning Bylaw. Through the first year of using the zoning bylaw, a number of typos and/or technical errors have come to light. This is not unusual with a document of this size and complexity. In our effort to maintain the bylaw in a current and accurate form, the enclosed draft bylaw has been prepared to address these issues. Uh, property at seven-eighteen Third Street was inadvertently given the urban services zoning as part of the new zoning bylaw. As this property is an apartment block not associated with seniors homes, it would be appropriate to redistrict the property to R four, high-density residential. This would be consistent with the historical zoning on this property on some of our maps, not all, and the wishes of the new owner of the property. Another change, excuse me, that is required is to adjust the limit on fences that don't require a permit to match other sections of the current zoning bylaw, and to maintain consistency with the former zoning bylaw provisions. This is treated as a typo by planning staff and would benefit from a correction. The zoning bylaw clearly states that all measurements are to be given in metric format, though imperial measurements are offered for comparisons. Yeah, we went to the metric system many years ago. Several of the measurements provided for comparison in the zoning districts require an update. Finally, Water Security Agency provided the city with LiDAR contour elevations of the Suris River Valley from the Rafferty Dam to Roche Percy. As this elevation data is much more accurate than what is provided for in our current zoning bylaw, the floodplain elevation map has been updated for inclusion into the zoning bylaw. As these proposals are minor or technical in scope, the Planning and Development Act allows for these updates to be adopted without the need for public review process. The recommendation is that council consider passage of the proposed bylaw. So, Richard, we're looking at again tonight just first reading?
Yes, your worship.
Okay, thank you, aren't you happy I read that out for you?
Yeah, thank you, worship, if there's any questions, feel free to ask. None of these affected any decision-making issues that we incurred through the last year. Basically, I had, like, I had six meters for metric, which is supply, and then I would have the incorrect amount of feet, and it's, these things happen, that kind of a document, and this document through auto-council, it went through administration several times, heck, it went through community planning even, so I'm hoping that we got them all, and
We're human, Richard, as humans, we make mistakes every day, or else we're not doing anything. So we respect the fact, the fact that you brought that up, you have one more comment?
Yes, one more comment. And I guess I'd like to do a shout-out to Water Security Agency. This LiDAR information that we obtained from them free of charge, for us to obtain that by ourselves, it would have easily been in six figures. And we got it for free, and so I'd just like to say a big thank you to Water Security Agency. This mapping, before our floodplain was plus or minus a meter, now we're within a centimeter of knowing where our floodplain from the Suris River Valley is. So many thanks to Water Security Agency.
Okay, well, thank you, Richard, and perhaps city clerk, I will write a letter of thank you to the water agency for the hundred thousand dollar plus Christmas, yes, absolutely. Councilor Vroba?
Yes, Richard, thank you for the work that you've done, and this has come to council a couple of times now, and so, yeah, I think you've pointed out all the errors, and that's good that they're fixed now, so I'll make the motion that we recommend first reading.
Thank you, Councilor Vroba, have we got a second, Councilor Ford, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Saying none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under public hearings and reports this evening, we have none. Giving notice, we have none. Motion from committee, we have none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, we'd like to give bylaw twenty-two-three dash twenty-seventy-six to regulate buildings within the city of Estevan second and third reading. So bylaw. Number twenty-two-three dash twenty-seventy-eight, a bylaw of the city of Estevan to amend zoning bylaw number twenty-two-two dash twenty-sixty-one, being a bylaw of the city of Estevan to regulate the use of land and location of buildings and other structures in the city of Estevan, we're asking for second reading of this bylaw. What's the wish of council? Councilor Wolaser, thank you. And I know, Councilor Vroba, you were waiting for someone to come forward, okay, thank you for that, and seconded by Councilor Vroba. Any questions or comments during second reading, I have to ask council if they have an inquiry in mind, and they might want to ask a question. So I ask of you that now. Saying none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now I will ask, ask for third final reading and adoption for use of bylaw twenty-two-three dash twenty-seventy-six to regulate buildings within the city of Estevan. Councilor Clark, thank you, seconded by Councilor Cernick, thank you. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, inquiries, Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, worship, um, city manager, I was just wondering, I had asked a while ago, I think, an email regarding seating in a lobby area of Finney Place, is that, were you able to look into that and have any feedback?
Um, thank you, Councilor Vroba, it was forwarded to the facility staff, I know they had put out the tables in front of the squash courts, because that was an area as well.
Yeah.
Um, I will follow up, because I noticed today there was no seating out front.
Okay, yeah, I know sometimes they used to pull them in, pull them out, some of the double-A and triple-A teams, they have all the tables set up all the time, so I was, and I don't know about over closer to the actual eating area, because I think now they use that for lineups, so even if we had one or two that could just stay out there. Um, the other thing is, I had a inquiry that I had already talked to city manager about too, regarding cement blocks in our pathways, if they were owned or rented, and the city does own them, for anyone has the inquiry in mind, to somebody had actually thought maybe we were renting them, it was costing the city some money. So no, we are not renting them, they're paid for. And I also attended the pitch competition hosted by Gord Moore with the Southeast Tech Hub. Four very worthy entrepreneurs with their businesses presented, and it was very interesting, it was a good crowd that came out, and I recommend, hopefully if they do it again, that people go out, it's like a dragon stand. Uh, the two very worthy students, Logan Stewart and Wyatt Thompson, grade twelve students. I actually thought they were from Lautman, but I read in David's article, they go to school at Carnduff. So basically, these boys were doing the mobile irrigation system that they've developed, designed, and planned to develop, so they won the twenty-two thousand five hundred, and good luck to them both in their new venture, and good luck to the other three companies too that plan to build businesses in Estevan or Southeast Saskatchewan.
Thank you, Councilor Vroba, appreciate you, worship. Thank you, Councilor Roba. Appreciate, uh, you were able, able to make it. And yeah, it was very well received and. Councilor Cernick was there as well, and, uh, it was a nice evening. Uh, go ahead, Councilor Clark.
Uh, thanks, your worship. Uh, attended the hooky for hockey, uh, Bruins game where there, I think there was over a thousand. Uh, young students at, and I just want to commend the teachers and those kids for their. Behavior. It was a great day, and they were well, well behaved. It was just a, a good sense of community. That are brought to that rink, and I, I think people could be pretty proud of their families that were at that, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Did you have to turn your hearing aid down?
I didn't have to cheer, so.
Okay, good. Thank you, Councilor Wolizer.
Nothing tonight, your worship.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, just to add to Councilor Roba's, uh, comment about the pitch competition, just stay tuned in the coming year for some more innovation activities. That we'll be doing. We'll be hosting a couple more innovation talks and a, a number of larger things coming up in twenty twenty-four, so stay tuned for that. And just a reminder that, uh, this isn't city, but it's city-related. CP Rail will be closing a crossing tomorrow from nine thirty to eleven thirty. On the thirteenth avenue and sixth crossing, so that's the one by McDonald's. So just if everyone could plan an alternate route, that would be awesome.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford. Yeah, that's a very busy crossing. Probably get a few phone calls tomorrow. I think I might be. Oh, but we'll see. Uh, Councilor Cernick.
Thank you, worship. No inquiries tonight, but just, uh, just a shout out to the committee of the festival trees. So it was a, it was a good evening as well, and the new floor proved to be good again, so there was lots of high heels out there. I didn't see any frozen toes.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we thank Sub Sue for partnering with us on that floor. Uh, that was a three hundred thousand dollar floor. Uh, it's proved to be very successful. It's nice and warm. The women can wear dresses again. They don't have to wear big, heavy snow boots and underwear. So that's, uh, definitely a bonus. Uh, we'd like to thank the committee and Lori Jarvis. And all of her crew, they did a fantastic job. Go ahead, Councilor Frank.
Nothing missing, your worship.
Nothing to say? He looks scared. Okay, city manager, anything to add? Not this evening. City clerk, anything to add? And I know, uh, the city treasurer probably would have something to add, but she's in Mexico. So she can't add anything tonight. So do we have a motion to move into committee? Thank you, Councilor Ford. Seconded by. Councilor Frank, all in favor? Karen, thank you so much. We stand to church. Good night.